You. This, I call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectment and Board of Health at Townhouse Auditorium, September 27th, 2021, 6:00 P. M. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely, remotely using video conferencing technology that provided for in Governor Baker's March 2020 emergency order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, and through the government, the citizens, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the justice for all.
You.
Anyone reporting the meeting?
We need, no. Uh, we have no minutes. And the first order of business is Chief Trombley regarding various issues.
Good evening. Or, Mr. Chairman, I, the first one I like to bring to the board's attention is it was a letter that I forwarded to you back in September 13th from one of our officers who had gotten COVID. And this, uh, this officer was asking for time to be reimbursed that was used, um, by being out. It happened to be two sick days and then three vacation days because there weren't enough sick days in the count. Um, I know in the past when, um, COVID was really ramped up and vaccinations were going on or we had had, uh, four individuals within inside the department that had COVID that had times reimbursed. That was back in 2020. Um, I did a little research and, uh, towns around us had stopped reimbursing, um, time to, uh, to their officers and pretty much if you had gotten COVID as of recent, uh, you would be using your own sick time or whatever time you have. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read the letter, um, but this particular officer, um, did test it positive, was out, but then was going into a vacation period of time and had a letter to come back only a few days after. So the amount of time that that person you, that officer used, again, like I said, it was two sick days, uh, and three vacation days that they were asking for. That time to re-in reimburse to her and then a decision that you made by the board where we go from this point on, if all officers or anybody gets it from this point on, could time be reimbursed or continue to be reimbursed? Uh, I did bring attention to, um, Administrator Markle that, uh, the state has a paid leave that's in effect until, uh, September 30th, that they've allowed to, uh, meet where depending on what sick time you use, an amount of, I think, eight hundred and fifty dollars, they pay the difference back to the town for that purpose. But you have to apply for it by September 30th, something like that. And I did send an application over to Officer Markle.
So they used up the two remaining sick days?
Yes.
And they used up three vacation days?
Correct.
And they want to restore those days?
They want to restore the two vacation days along with the three vacation days, correct?
They got paid for those days? Okay, so they just want to restore the days?
Restore those days to be able to use them again at a later point in time, like they used no time.
And you said other towns have stopped doing that after a certain period?
Correct. Um, I'm thinking, uh, from my understanding, um, April, around April, it stopped and if you were to have gotten COVID, um, you have a new time that you have to close. And then this program started, they went from May to September 30th, where they only give you a portion back through the state, which is, it was called a paid leave, sick pay, paid leave.
Forever emergency paid leave?
Yeah, right. You got it. Thank you.
Just pull it up.
Okay. And that's the application that Bob had. That we'd have to get a signature from the employer, uh, then the employee, and then he would submit it and there's a reimbursement. It's not a hundred percent for a hundred percent, but, um, there is something that would come back if we were, if we were to go that way. Um, and then just looking to see what we'd like to do is as we move forward, if someone unfortunately gets, uh, COVID again in our department for reimbursements.
Your recommendation, Mr. Merkel? I agree with the proposal of the chief. So we would, we would restore the, I mean, it is never, it, they've already been paid.
They've already been paid. You're basically going to be restoring two sick days with three other sick days. It's hard to put a price tag on it. It's like a week of vacation per se, because anybody can be taking those vacation days. So if that person were to take a vacation day off, I can have a sergeant as high as pay taking. I can have a part-time taking. I can't mandate takes.
And September 30th, the end date of this program where we could, we could possibly get half of it back?
You might get something back if you were to file.
So I guess my point is, is the board then making an official position? The team is asking for, I hate to say it, a little latitude. Other towns have not done this. Saying, okay, let's let this one individual get the grace period. And then you recommend it from now on, if they get COVID, they had every opportunity not to be sick, so we're not reimbursing them. Is that your recommendation?
Uh, but basically along those lines here, because we got to come to a point and say where we're going with it. And, uh, obviously, you know, between people being vaccinated, not vaccinating and, you know, we, it's not like we don't have, I mean, I know if you read the letter, it mentions about gloves and all that. We do have sanitizers. We still have gloves. We still have masks that officers can wear going to our locations in town that they may not have it. Um, but it has come to an end because people are being vaccinated. Uh, and so that they've realized that and other departments have realized that. So like you said, if we reimburse this person moving forward, do the right things and, or we say it just, it's, so that's, that's what I'm looking for right now. Right? You recommended, okay, let's take care of this one. But are you recommending going forward? You've made it clear to the department that the town is not going to be covering your COVID sick time. I can make that clear to the department. Is that our position?
Right.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like if you have made the effort to avoid COVID by getting vaccinated, then I have some sympathy for the folks that contracted, you know, the, the breakthrough cases. If you haven't been vaccinated and you're a police officer, interacting with people all over town and you get it, I'm not sure. I would be very sympathetic toward replacing sick time.
So I.
Which is what we talked about.
That's what we talked about, absolutely. Unfortunately, we still, you know, not everyone is vaccinated.
I'm just going to ask you, I don't want you to share too much, but you're not on the.
No, and I'm not happy with that.
If we sign up for this program, it's only effective for another three days? Do we know if there's anything else coming down the pipeline through the state?
I'm not aware of any.
I'm not either. I think the biggest push is vaccinations.
Right. So my position would be to allow this in the last available date is September 30th.
So we would reimburse the two sick days and then the three vacation days, then apply for.
No, that will, we're not going to, we're just going to add them back into.
Add them back into their account, into their account to be able to use again, right?
So we'll apply for whatever we can get, which probably nothing besides the point.
At least we try.
Weren't, weren't some of these days covered by CARES coming?
Right, early on there was a program where you were getting.
Can we? Build them up? So again, the only program I know, John, that is actually working is, is particularly the paid leave, uh, that CARES might have been there at one point in time. I think that's where.
I thought we still had time.
I have time from the CARES Act. Have to refresh on the CARES Act, which I'll be doing, by the way, the next day or two because we're submitting for the final allotment.
Oh, well then if you could get Bob an amount that he could put in, if we get reimbursed, great. If we don't, right.
All right.
All right, um.
Next, this show.
Next, um, I did send out some information today. Um, I know we've been aware of a bridging academy that's, um, for our part-time officers, our reserve officers, as you were saying, we're going to try not to take too, too long, um, in explaining it. Uh, the municipal training Police Council has, uh, Commission has, um, set standards for the police reform, um, back in December. And, uh, basically, um, the standards that have been set, we have, uh, part-time officers that, uh, have to be certified. These, uh, part-time officers have a period of time to be certified based on their last name. Um, currently, right now, it was supposed to have started on July 1st. And, uh, any person or any officers whose last name is A through H has to be certified up to, uh, the same guidelines as a full-time police officer, um, by June 30th of 2022, where you lose your certification as a police officer. You can no longer work as a police officer for a road detail or for any type of patrol. Um, we have, um, five officers that fall under the A through H curve. Comes out to be, as I broke down their hour, hour rate, bridge academy, annual service, ammunition, which is an ammunition shortage. So it's another issue. We've got to pay for a physical and we've got to pay for a physical ability testing.
What happens if they don't pass the physical?
Uh, they can't go any further. So in order to, um, uh, you've got to pass the physical, then you've got to do the physical abilities challenge test. Uh, and then you go on to an 80-hour online, uh, training. Um, those 80 hours, once they're complete, you move on to the next segment, which is going to be a, um, four proctored exams. And there's 40 hours of defensive track, uh, defensive tactics training live in person. Then there's 40 hours of emergency vehicle operator course that you have to drive one of our cruisers out on the course. Then you also have 40 hours of firearms training, which is approximately a thousand rounds of 45 ammunition, which is our pistol, and approximately a thousand rounds of a two-two-three rifle patrol.
And you should have thousands of them.
In a weeks-long course that you have to do. So what we did as a full-time officer, our part-time officers now have to be built up to our level where we were as a full-time officer, now to continue working. Um, and so as the letter I kind of did send out previously, there were some changes from there. They talk about a 2,400 hours over a five-year period of time. And then they talk about a police academy at the end. Um, most of our officers that are working part-time, probably some are maybe close to that 2,400 hours, working with other departments. And then our department, within our department alone, they probably won't make that 2,400 hours. They were making a 2,400 hour cap. I, as the chief of police, could sign off on it. It will be fully full-time certified. Um, and then they kind of sit dormant to see if there's an opening inside our agency. The other thing is they go to a full-time academy. Uh, the problem being now is with all of our officers, depending on your last name where you bridge, the ending date to either being certified or sent to a full-time police academy is 2027. Um, but right now I have five officers that, if we would like to move forward with bridging our part-time officers towards a full-time status with the opportunity of them being able to work within, inside our agency at some point in time or not, uh, I could go ahead and bridge five officers, six officers, never have an opportunity to meet the exemption of hours, never have an opportunity to go to a full-time academy because I don't have an opening within my agency. And we could have spent X amount of dollars on it. Do we look to go towards hiring another full-time officer, uh, another two full-time officers or another three over the next few years? Because now when I have officers taking time off, need someone to cover that officers, sick day, vacation day, holiday day, comp, whatever, whatever have you. Um, so I'm looking for a little direction rather quickly than.
How many officers do you have now that are close to 2,400 hours?
Excuse me?
How many officers now are close to 2,400 hours?
I have one in the first group that's not that far, maybe like 400 hours, 500 hours. He hasn't gotten to me with all the time from the other community he worked into. Um, so I really don't have anybody there right now. It's going to be hard for me to give them the hours to work because they don't work a lot of hours. Our full-time officers have the first right of refusal, so they don't work a lot of hours here anyway. So they get there, they figured this 2,400 hours was over a five-year period plan. I got a couple of guys that are up around 1,600 maybe, but this first tier, they have maybe one that's around that. So in this first tier out of those five, um, I'd have to look at some hours and really see where the town would like to go. Do we spend that amount of money on them and say we give them all that opportunity? The other problem I run into is shortage of ammunition too. Um, you know, we've been ordering ammunition from, not expecting any of this, but we do have some ammunition set up. We go to qualification in October and asking my firearms instructor after October, when I qualify in our whole full-time contingent, how much do I have left over to make it, allow any of these guys to continue to bridge by June 30th? We're only talking maybe two, maybe, maybe two, maybe three. So I have to go ahead and order more ammunition if I get the guidance that where, yeah, look at, we have extra monies, we have ARPA funds, we have this, we have that. We're going to take the chance on these guys. They've been working for us for several years and we're going to give them the opportunity to get certified.
Just to clarify, it's either 2,400 hours, sign off, or they have to go to the bridge.
So I could, so again, going back to correct in saying what you're saying, Craig, so if these officers were to make 2,400 hours, not really likely.
Over five years.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, I would sign off on it. Now they're fully certified. But mind you, I still pay you $21 an hour as a part-time officer as a full-time certified, right? And you can sit in the winds, wait for me to have an opening here, and I can maybe plug you into that opening if you're my candidate. Now, of course, I'm going to reach out to other full-time officers. You also, as coming from my reserve, I know who I have. I might hire from within the site, but I also might have another candidate here that I could. The expectations is you're going to probably try to hire from more within the side of your department.
The other thing is that you're going to be spending this money, but you don't have a commitment from these people to stay with Hampton. We might go ahead and spend the $75,000 and next year they're now an officer for East Hampton or Sturbridge or whatever.
Correct. And so a few of them who are really looking to move forward with the bridge process and all that have offered out, they're non-union employees and have offered out to a commitment, uh, if there was a reimbursement agreement that we set up where if you were to happen to leave after you've got your certification through the town of Hampton and I spent $7,000 on you as an officer, then you'd be willing to give that money back. Now, of course, we could end up chasing that person.
Is that enforceable?
Well.
It's enforceable when you have other applications, other jobs, if they used to assign on bonus or training, if you leave in a certain amount of time, you have to reimburse for the training.
So a contract, a contract could be probably drawn up through legal counsel, Bob?
I mean, sure, it wouldn't look good to their next job applicant as you walk down the commitment to your prior employer, correct, to that point.
I, I put that three-year requirement for training in, in a contract in another community and council said it was enforceable.
The other thing you could do is you can make them, you can make them pay for it and reimburse them for three years, right, as they're here. They wanted that, right?
But they're employed by us currently at this point in time, right? So.
How long do they have to do this?
So the group up at the top, the five officers right there, if we were to send all them, they have to June, June 20th, June 30th, 2022, to go through this whole bridge.
That's the deadline.
That's their deadline.
If they don't do that, they can't be a police officer.
They're no longer a police officer anymore to stay in Massachusetts. If they make the bridge, they go through a physical, they go through the medical, they all pass all their testing and all that. They now have another five years till 2027 to still make those hours to get 2,400 hours or continue working.
So they can bridge and then work towards the hours. So they have to have both then.
Right, by the end.
And then the next group is when?
The next group would be, uh, next group would start June, uh, July 1st, 2022, which would be the next four. And then the last one would be, we have one officer this current time.
So it's one year, one year, one year.
Right. Three years that they give you with those letters.
So Officer D starts, goes to the Bridge Academy and gets all his, he shoots his thousand rounds of ammunition and does all that kind of stuff, right? And he needs 450 hours?
He would need 2,400 hours to be written off over a five-year period of time. Now Officer D could have 1,600 hours from another department that he can take and bring together. So the, the problem with the standards being set and put in place, two-fold. MPTC just made their decision with this to go forward. Post-Commission, which is our new Police Reform Commission, has to agree with this. We'll say should agree, but they have to continue. These guys are supposed to start Ju-, June, uh, July 1, or in October. They know that they got to get stuff going right away. So they're going with the bridge. They're going with everything right now. Post-C should expect and, and grant this waiver to go forward that way. But, uh, absolutely, D.
Uh, we'll go back to the hours.
D could get the hours. He has to make those hours by 2027 if he bridges. If I don't bridge him, he's not going to make the hours this year. There's no way, because I need a full, I need a part-time department in order for that to happen. My full-timers get first right of refusal.
With the current first right of refusal hourly, can they, can your part-time officers make?
The way it sits now?
The way it sits now?
I'm totally confused.
Okay, so right now.
I'm not too bright, so you have to work with me.
This, this is hard because i- it's not an easy concept and a lot of chiefs.
So I'm Officer D.
Officer D.
I've been on the force for a year, it's a year.
You've been a reserve.
So now this comes along and I want to bridge.
You want them rich.
I do all my stuff. All right, how many hours do I have to work a year?
480 hours.
480 hours a year. If I work 480 hours a year, so what's the 2,400 hours?
After five years, 480.
So that's to be a total of, of five times 480 is 24 hours.
So that'll be the minimum hours you've got to work a year is 480.
Anything up to accumulate.
Now it's changed that, right? Exactly. Anything up to.
Okay. So there is no minimum. You could go zero and then a thousand, a thousand.
So if I have 1,600, if I have 1,600 hours because I worked in East Long Meadow for, you know, three or four years, whatever it is, and then I would only need 800 and $800 over the next five years here.
Or, which is, or anywhere. Or, or anyone, the thing is, is if I do, if I double badge you, all of a sudden I say, hey, go work in months in East Long Meadow, right? It hurts me when my officer calls out sick or needs vacation time because he could be working in East Long Meadow. So I'm going to be selfish. I don't want you double badge you. I don't want you triple badge you. I want you working for me.
So does detail work come?
No, that's the thing is they want.
You have to be actual police officer, sit in the parking lot surveilling like I was.
So this was on a quick run. That was good, Don. Um, December, this was supposed to have been ready July 1, July, whenever it was going to go. So the, um, Municipal Training Council said, we're going to give you part-time officers. There's 2,200, 2,200 part-time officers in the state of Massachusetts. We're going to do so. We're going to train you. We're going to give you 200 hours of in-service firearms, this, this, and this, that the full-timers went, we're good. And they start, they're going to run that out and all of a sudden, full-time departments who don't use part-time officers and all the full-time unions got together and go, how is that fair? How can I train a part-time officer who's never been a full-time officer up to this level with only 200 hours of in-service? So they had to rework everything. It went down. And so over the last couple of months, they finally worked out all the kinks that they believe is the right thing to show that we're showing reform. They want a law enforcement officer out on that road when you see him in a cruiser, standing at a detail. Unfortunately, this is what police reform has brought to us for guys that have worked 30, 40 years as a part-time officer. And the other caveat behind that unfortunately is not having these part-time officers working at a road job anymore. I would have to create a whole different group to have a part-time out there. It was non-sworn police officer, can't carry a weapon and, um,
So civilian.
Different maybe auxiliary? Yeah, auxiliary really isn't something that can be utilized anymore for detail.
No, no.
It's all the same now.
The only thing that you fall back onto is, um, I have a police officer retires from the city of Springfield, full-time. He has 30 years over there, 32 years service, he gets 80% of his retirement. He still misses a job. He wants to go work part-time. He's fully academy trained. I can hire him. I can bring him over here. He can work details. He can work shift work for me. And so that was a thought, you know, as some of these officers, do I think all these officers are, are going to be bridged?
No.
No. As some decide to fall off or don't make it, then we're going to have to look if we want to continue working with part-time officers, hiring that guy. That guy's not out there. In over three years, these guys get certified. I might have a few more, but now are we looking to go for?
What's their mandatory retirement age as well?
65, public retirement system.
How many are close to aging now?
In this group here, I took them all off. So none of these guys here, the first one I had, I didn't say, I don't think I said that one over too much. None of these guys are, are aging out.
Have any of them considered, have any of them considered changing their name to a Z?
Uh, well, yeah, so let me go back. I'm sorry, Craig. Uh, on the second tier, I took them out of the first tier. The second tier, I didn't take them out. So, yeah, we would have two that would age out. So I probably have two in the second tier that probably need to be pushed for bridging.
So.
We can use.
So what would you do with this? Would you have to hire somebody else?
So if we could, depending on what happens with us as we move forward with our full-time officers currently and how we decide to do their first right of refusal and all that, if I'm still in the need to have a part-time officer working their days off and all that, then I could hire another part-time officer. To alleviate that, maybe hiring another full-time guy who has, the way I have a minimum man, a minimum manning portion that falls into, like if I had three officers per shift that did their rotations, you call out sick, John and Craig are here, I'm not going to fill that shift anymore. Right now I have to fill because I don't want to go down to one officer working.
The, so what I'm seeing happening is that all departments, our size, are going to end up being full-time, everybody at some point because it just, that they're trying to give a part-time police.
The police reform has really put a jam up to a part-time officer unless, and that's why they've allowed this bridge academy to get out of the 2,200 who really want to continue and are able to continue, giving them a little more push. So that's why they went to 2027. It was a class that just graduated in May and they felt it wouldn't be fair to keep these standards that they had the three-year tier. So they put another five years on to it and said, within this five-year, 2027, any part-time in the state of Massachusetts, you better be bridged up.
Yeah.
Or no more. So it'll be, there's going to be one academy. It's going to be a full-time academy.
So it's going to be full-time or campus security?
Well, campus security is affected now.
Really?
Yeah, so, so they, Sheriff's Department. Yeah, it's, 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 it affect the whole world. It's campus security, Sheriff's Department, um, the guys are just out there doing the details. Police reform wants one law enforcement officer. If you're going to be carrying a gun and a badge, you better, and you're going to have all the standards of the training of full-time officer.
How often now are part-timers getting, or, um, filling spots, open spots?
Uh, not as much as I'd like it to be that way because of the first right of refusal. First, I mean, again, depending on, our department's been going great with the, uh, full-timers and the part-timers mix. And, and John, I know you've been around for a long time, it's been a great movement, but where we have gone to over the years, we've built closure to that more of a full-time department.
Right.
So, um, five shifts are offered out to our full-time officers within a week period of time. Um, and after that, they can go back to a part-time officer. So they're not working that often.
And so it's my understanding that ARPA funds may pay for it or will pay for it.
They will bridge it.
They'll pay for the bridging and the, is that the academy? Is that the, ends everything?
Yes.
Ammunition?
Well, we, yes, we had talked about, uh, maybe 50,000 to process everybody over a period of a couple.
That was prior to me learning, I think it was 54,000. That was prior to me learning, um, more expectations. I got to pay for the medical, I got to pay for the physical, I got to pay for the ammunition. Um, and then the cost of them doing all their own training online. Um, that's all a newer cost that we didn't happen to play. Well, I had the 200 hours at their $21 an hour. That was my 54.
Well, my next question would be, can you encumber ARPA money? Because some of this money will be paid out until 2024.
Yeah, we, we're, we are not required to spend out the ARPA money until 2024. Let's, we have until 2024 to spend ARPA. So I don't think, chance are we won't have to encumber it. We can, we can just reserve it and make sure that.
I think you have more guys that were in the last part of the alphabet. We wouldn't have this problem.
Yeah, I would. I didn't, I wasn't in the process. Um, now let me, can I ask you this question quickly?
No, you can't. I got to answer some questions.
Okay.
The, your FY '23, another, the next one down there?
Yes.
Is that just like every year they have to have in-service training?
Yes.
Right? So now we're saying all these guys are, are branch, they're all set. We own them and we have to pay about 500, $600 a year for in's, in-service training, plus another 250 bucks for the ammo. They can't use them all.
You're a full-time. This is your worst case. This night, a couple of guys are going to drop off this.
Yes, yes. You're absolutely right. And, and the other thing is if, if you were, as a board, were to direct me and say, okay, it's not going to be X amount, it's going to be X amount. I got to go back and look at these guys and who's been working a lot. Okay, you and you have been working a lot. You're getting bridged? You've been here, you've been helping out. Okay, the ones that aren't helping out?
You did 10 hours last year. I really.
I, I'm sorry, but you know what? You've got, your time is ended now. Um, and so that is another way to look at it too, depending on, but this is the worst case.
I really would like to investigate some way to get the commitment though. Like I said, if the town's going to put out, even though it's ARPA money, right, you know, $70,000 over a bunch of guys.
Here's my concern though, too. If we commit to guys to go and bridge them and they can't make the 2,400 hours because of first right of refusal, we're just throwing money out because we're going to have to drop them. So we either have to figure something out.
Yes and no. I mean, Scott does have the ability. Like you say, he doesn't want to double badge. But if he said, guy comes and look, there's no available shifts. I want to make my number. Well, okay, fine. You have my permission to go take some shifts. You're not abandoning him then. You've given him everything he could. Go take another shift in another town to get your number up.
I, I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying. I frown upon that because now when my guy calls out sick and I can't get anybody to work it, I got to order somebody in. I'm paying double time for that guy when this guy couldn't have been available to work.
Understand that, but when he's gone week after week after week with nothing, it's, look, gee, I want to start building up my hours. What can I do?
You know.
You're rocking heartless.
You are, and, and I, and the hours is just only one portion of it. Talking to many chiefs, a lot of chiefs say, I want to have the ability to look at those hours. But I don't know, I don't know necessarily if I want to sign these guys up as a certified officer, a full-time officer. Because on the other end, if you don't do this, there's a full-time academy that you have. So now when I have an opening of a retirement, I look and I say, you might be going to the full-time academy. Uh, you bridge, but you're still going to go to the full-time academies. You didn't need these hours. Um, and I might have somebody else who comes to me that's already fully, fully trained. But I have that option rather than being stuck to that guy who made the 2,400 hours or that commitment. He might not be the right fit for me. At the end, he might be the right fit right now. Is he the right fit? He's been working for me two years, three years, five years. So.
Let's talk quality of service. If we go part-time and we have these rotating schedules and try to get people their hours, as opposed to say, we hire, you mentioned three full-time officers over the next however many years.
Right.
How is that going to affect our quality of service in the end? How is that gonna affect our quality of service in the end?
I mean, obviously a part-time officer is just a part-time job.
Right.
Full-time officer, they're hope to be committed to our town and, and, and to our residents and, and move forward. So I think obviously as we move forward, the look, as we said, is a full-time department. So you're probably going to be able to still keep a few of our part-time officers around. They can do the road jobs, they can still fill in. But the quality service again, you know, I came from a part-time officer. Part-time officers do a great job. Our full-time officers too, it's where the state is putting us into that position. I don't wanna say a part-time officer's not gonna be doing the job for us because I think they are going to, they do. It's just their availability to be here for us and they're not always able to be here because of their own work. Plus because our full-time officers are doing their full-time job and doing the extra overtime that they have given, been given that right to do. You know, so if we even were to add another full-timer and had some of those real good part-timers, which we do, we have a great part-time force here. And I like to keep them going as long as we can, but at some point in time, we know that some are gonna fall off by age. And some are just gonna fall off and then some may look to go to another department or just.
I don't wanna get it down to just money, chief. I wanna, from your analysis of the department. Are you providing adequate service of town, good service to the town with the force you have? Or you're saying, look. We can do a better job for him than if I have an extended full-time staff. And that's our job here.
Right.
You know, if it's what's needed, we'll find the money for it.
Right.
We're not just gonna throw the money at it because it makes it look good. And I think that's where the direction from you is important.
Right.
Look, I see a need, we need three officers on the ship.
Right.
That's the best fit because this isn't happening, this isn't happening, we're missing out on this.
That's the type. In all honesty, John, I mean, I, I, it's hard to get. Officers to go above and beyond. I'll be straight up with it, okay? I, I, as a full-time, as a part-time officer, finding it hard. Come out and help and do this, come out and help and do that, right? So at the end of the day, you know, everybody wants to be paid to do this or paid to do that. We've talked about this, volunteering and stuff. So I don't know if we're yet at an all contingent full-time department, three more officers. And, and, and you know, the town can look at me and say whatever, but I mean, I've been there for twenty-seven years and I mean, we're lucky to where we sit. It has changed call-wise, dangerous calls, but any one given time, as we've seen already, two officers show up and. Something bad could happen as we have to pull out our taser or our firearm and all that. And, and that, that can happen in a small town. We're by no means a Springfield, a Chicopee, anything can happen at any given time. But the quality service of what we have here between part-time officers and full-time officers, we're there. Do I know? Do I think we need another two full-timers? Of course, it, it'd be nice, but I mean, we are doing the job of what we have, but. At some point in time, we could maybe go a little bit, but I don't know whether or not.
And that goes back to the money thing you said. Look, you can put on two full-timers and with the change in the reserve plan situation. If it's almost a wash, well, that helps the board with the decision at that point. Because your commitment level is obviously higher for the full-time guy.
Right.
No question.
It is.
Down to a five percent difference between the two, it'd be information that the board could use.
As part of our budget analysis. I mean, I would hope that that full-time officer comes all over here, it wants to go above and beyond for our residents or how we have it, it did work, but.
Are they going away from civil service towns within this police reform?
Yeah, so Palmer just dropped civil service and they are towns, not necessarily just because of the police reform. The frustrations of going out and getting the list, the protections are still, still good there. The town aware still wants, stay right in there, they're happy with it. But towns of, of, of getting the list for the hiring and all that are, they're just frustrated of waiting. Towns have gone down six, seven guys before they can get into that six, seven guys, then these guys don't wanna go here. So I think other reasons besides police reform, I don't believe in police reform.
Then other communities around here, are they part-time too or is everybody else full-time?
So Munson is in a very similar boat with us. East Long Meadow doesn't have any part-timers, Long Meadow doesn't have any part-timers. Ludlow has a few specials they're called over there, but they don't, the more contingent is the full-time contingent for them. A lot of departments have gone away from the part-time contingent. And have geared more towards that full-time department.
Are there any implications for benefits from the reform that will be undertaken?
The only one other question that's gonna pop off of this is, ARPA for full-time, like you said about full-time, is ARPA unable to be used for full-time offices? I'm not sure if it's. Because then you got benefits there then.
Yeah, but for how long?
Because now we're gonna have to, you pay for that starting pay of that full-time officer, you add the benefits and you, now it's only a one-time shot at that full-time officer.
Right, yeah. Alright, so these, these guys gotta start.
So enrollment started last Tuesday. Fiscals and medicals are tough. I do have a few medicals that I secured for an appointment only. I don't have a path testing. So these guys gotta start as soon as we can start. Because they gotta finish up, so. As soon as I got, with this group only, the first group of that group, as soon as I get a medical in a physical ability test appointment. They can start their eighty-hour online training. Then they'll come to their next trains that come along as they move along.
And those five you predict over the course of their, their training would be thirty-seven thousand dollars?
For that training for, for all of them to, for them to bridge, just to bridge.
And this will be paid for by ARPA funds? We go in that direction for now and then we see how it.
Then what do we do July first though? July first is another batch.
So then.
July first is another batch, we see how this works.
Potential for, you're saying there might be, I see Mike and Bob as the potentially.
Well, Mike, no. He's not public service. Bob, no. But they may not wanna continue because they're. They're closer to, right, right, right. They may not, so that's the conversation. I had a meeting with, with the group the other day and I said, really, the direction really depends on. Where we're going with the board, where we wanna go and if they say the money for ARPA can be used, then when we get into another meeting. Serious, in all seriousness, if you get quotient, that date you.
The second batch of ARPA money will pay for that.
How many officers are gonna wanna just stay on because of pension at the end? So we're investing all this money into them and then they're only gonna be around for another year or two.
So they'll also only be part-time.
Right.
Full-time, they're not gonna have a pension. No, 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 no. So they're, so they're still fully certa, full-time certified.
Okay.
They're still a part-time employee.
Going full-time status, it'll just be.
The only, only way they go full-time status if I have an opening.
Anything down the road on that? I think you shared with us before, there might be.
Yeah. Yes. So that would be a good fund for at least one in this group. So, yes.
Right.
Alright, so we agreed that we're going to endorse the use of ARPA money for the first year candidates. Yes. Second, first group, yeah, second.
Thank you. It's for second group, I'll come back and. Thank you.
Tasers?
So the tasers, I did submit, my sergeant was going to give me a look at renewing the contract that we have. We currently have three that we can trade in as a five to seven-year shelf life on them. They just become older, their display starts to wear down. The actual taser stuff is still good. But we might be on the readiness to upgrade all of our tasers and we can get another price on it other than what we submitted to Bob already.
They're about eighteen hundred of these.
I like that, I like.
How many do you have full?
We have, I think there's eight.
So you're looking for three, but you might go up to eight.
So we would be replacing three. I don't know, I, I kinda wanna give you a number, John, right off the top. I don't know exactly. All the full-timers have one. So we could actually have around twelve.
Alright, we'll wait for that.
Yeah, I, I wanna do a little more. I got my sergeant looking into, because there's a new plan that we could maybe get into to replace the ones we have to upgrade. Just a little bit more of a process.
Anything else?
The night out, yeah, yeah. Night out is October eighth. Fireworks after, that's four to seven, and a lot of other agencies involved. You know, everybody in the town's invited to come out and have a good time, a community event, to come together and see some of our police officers out there in demonstrations and. So, yeah, the only other thing is I have, ARPA funds would have been the server that me and Bob are talking about. Our server.
We need a server for twenty-three thousand.
Virtual server?
This is the server that was recommended by Asha Meehan who does all of our IT work and stuff like that.
What's our current server? Do we have a current server we're replacing? I thought we had.
Yeah, so this, this, this server was, this server is what's gonna be, this is, new one's gonna replace the old one that came from when we were here.
Right.
Right, and that was appropriate at the town before, at that point in time. This here has another expectancy year, year and a half where it should be looked and replaced.
We used to lease them back in the day from Wally.
Um, Wally's no longer.
No, I mean, that's how we did do it before. Can we investigate a lease program with Entree or VHS where we're using them? John, spending twenty-three and then owning harbor at the end that we can't use?
We can look into it, sure.
Right, Wally's working for the Red Sox.
That's all I have.
Thank you for stopping by.
They talked about this earlier, yes. Deaf contract, you were going to look to sign or look to do.
I signed it before the meeting, just in case we needed it, I didn't.
Yeah, I have it here.
Good.
You have it to sign, right? Senior Center Director. Senior Center, please see the.
I asked for Becky to be on here, I think it's time to really start kicking the senior center expansion into, into the limelight. Having some, some progression on reducing the debt in town, so I think it's really incumbent upon us to. Take care of the side, the part of the population that's paying the bills. And in fact, he's done a pretty good job of getting the feasibility study done. I think it's time to bring it up to the.
Go ahead.
He's ready to sign the contract and break ground tomorrow.
Sure.
Got that shovel up for us from last time?
I'm sure we have the shovel, yes. So I sent over the feasibility study that we had done and I don't know if you had a chance to look through it, but it's a. Okay, great. It was a really comprehensive study that EDM came out and did for us. That was partially funded by the earmark grant from the Senator as well as the Friends of Hampden Seniors. Funded the last portion of what was needed to complete that. So it's, it's very comprehensive. The design is in there for what the addition could look like. It, it came out really nice and it's about a forty-two hundred square foot addition. There are some minor changes to the current. Structure with extending a storage closet, things of that nature. There's a couple of. Maintenance issues in there that I think need to be addressed and we do put an addition on, like the roof is twenty-plus years now. And we do have some HVAC zoning issues that we'd like to take care of if, you know, we're doing work in the building anyway. Might be a good time to take care of those things. So we would be thrilled, obviously, to move forward with the project. Obviously, we would need to go out to bid and hire an OPM and things of that nature. It's a sizable project. Taking out the one point two million dollar parking lot estimate that they put in there. You know, these costs are based on right now construction and so they did say that it increases every year. But it, it's about three point five with what's, what's presented there.
What's the square footage right now?
So currently, what's in there too? It's about, that's a great question. So I'm thinking we're in the like. Ninety-three. That could be with the future addition though.
So this says sixty-eight fifteen. I didn't know if that was after or before.
So. We have, let's see, I think our usable space is like fifty-two, forty, something like that. So that number is.
So sixty-eight fifteen is the, the current size, not additional.
Correct, and then we'll go up to that eleven thousand with the additional.
So what percentage of seniors are in town?
About thirty percent. And the census number for older adults over the age of sixty in the twenty-twenty census is going to go up. So we're at thirteen hundred and forty-seven people over the age of sixty in town right now. And the projected census from the Donahue Institute is just over eighteen hundred. So we're probably gaining about five hundred.
A lot of those old people.
Yeah, so that could, you know, that could shift that percentage a little bit too because I think the, the overall town population number is a little bit lower. In the next census, but the older adult population is, is higher.
How many, what, what percentage do you think are using the facility?
Oh, that's a good question. I would have to look that up. I, I don't have a number on that, but I could certainly find one.
We do get people from out of town too.
We do get some people from out of town, yes.
And what, what effect do you think the Taj Mahal over at Wilberham is gonna have?
So we've had that question before. I feel like it, it won't have a huge impact on us. I think we have a really solid program right now. And, you know, we have people who know us and respect us and come to us even if they don't live in Hampden. And so we have built a really good reputation for the senior center. So I don't think it will have too big of an impact. There could be that initial, wow, look, that building is big and beautiful and great.
Two floors.
Two floors, that's great. But I, you know, I, I feel like the people that are currently coming to Hampden are going to continue to come to Hampden. We've had a lot of new people with our grab and go lunch program. People that have been now coming in for assistance with other things, so I think our numbers could increase. Plus the fact that the addition could give us a lot more space to do a lot more.
Yeah, so some of these now, some of these are for like medical, I mean, they would do blood pressure, you don't have that space for that now.
So we, we do, we do provide a blood pressure clinic and we have a nurse that comes in, but it's done in the library. And so.
It's gonna be more private.
There's more privacy. We also have our, the new veteran service officer, Michelle Barrett, who was just hired for our area. She has office hours in our building once a week and we give her the entire craft room because she needs the privacy and a door.
And wasn't the foot thing done in the janitor's closet?
Oh, we have plenty of programs in the auxiliary room, yes, which is the janitor's closet. Yeah, we renamed it, sounds much better. The auxiliary room is where massages, manicures, pedicures, foot care, facials, all of that happens in the janitor's. It's true.
Was it really gonna be two floors? Is that?
One floor. Wilberham.
Oh, Wilberham, there'll be two floors. Like, I don't see second floor here.
Yeah, no, just one. It just kinda comes out as an.
I mean, the problem with the, these costs here, and we all know what's been happening in the past year, but we didn't take, like you said, go play in parking lot out. It's a reasonable expansion. You're at sixty-eight hundred square feet now, which if you're adding about four thousand ballpark, you know. It's like the cost we put on for the police station. And it's unnecessary, it's a twenty-plus year old buildings. That's ready to go to the next level, the next phase, whatever. These are people who paid for it and continue to pay for it.
The. I don't know if you can ask to your architect or whatever, but in the, in his, in the, in the. The prose of, of the, of the thing, he says that the roof. He said, the existing exterior shell appears to be overall acceptable condition. The asphalt shingles appear to be reaching the end of their life and it would be recommended to replace the shingles as part of expansion. And then, over here in his costs, he says, replace the roof, hundred and forty thousand.
So he's put in his worst case. Technically, you're saying, he, he hasn't really assessed it, but if you were, this is like a better figure.
I just thought a hundred and forty thousand dollars for shingles would be a lot.
I think this time, if we do it, we definitely wanna factor in what was added last time, which was the heat coils. So. That's part of it. Another thing you might wanna look into is there are those new shingles that have the built-in solar capacity as well.
Tesla, Tesla she goes.
I think by it in Tesla.
Either way, there are other options out there, so.
Why do you think the parking lot's so much?
I'm not sure.
It includes the valet parking lot.
I mean, it's it's lovely. It's a nice design, and it's very safe. It doesn't increase our spaces at all. I mean, I like the center sidewalks, that's nice. I I don't think.
One point two million for a new park.
I don't know that it's a necessity to happen when we expand.
Must be that heated asphalt.
I mean, if someone comes forward and says they'll pay for it, I'll take the money.
So you're 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 doing, you're doing a a pool room?
We're moving the, we're moving the current billiard room, yes, that would move.
Okay, and craft room is where now?
Uh, it's currently in that blue square.
Little colored thing here.
Is yours colored? No. So the pool room and the craft room are next to each other.
Yeah.
Um, right, if you're looking at, this is the current pool room.
Yeah.
This is the current craft room.
Yeah.
So what happens is these walls come down, that are the walls of the craft room, and it it does a cut through into a new lounge area.
Yeah.
And then the pool room gets moved, the craft room gets moved, we add a conference room, and we have some personal service rooms here, so this could be nursing, uh, veterans' office, uh, foot care, other personal needs services. Um, it would also be a great place to have an ongoing fundraiser room for the friends to have, like a small boutique or something, so we could continue to raise funds year round um onsite. So certain things shift, and then this this little uh thing that juts out here is actually extra space, so that's the current pool room, but it would be an addition to give us a second multipurpose room. So exercise classes could be concurrent in our in our bedroom.
We might want to have the. The partition out of a door cost, uh, the partition across it?
This, yes, both rooms would have, uh, we would look to partition both rooms. I mean, this room has a partition currently.
How the flu clinic though?
Fantastic, a hundred and fifty vaccines. And we're getting calls about the booster, so.
What'd you say your capacity is right now during daily use, weekly use? Are you maxing out for space size?
Well, so we're still kind of slowly coming back from COVID. Um, but when we were at our peak before COVID, we were totally maxed out. I mean, we were, we had programs in the hall, we had programs in the library, we were canceling things to have other programs, you know, so we we definitely have been able to utilize a lot of the space and the custodial closet.
And that's the thing with the great room being, you know, one program on one side of the wall, one program on the other, this would give let's say some privacy, but also less interference of what's happening. I mean, the people that pitched, they don't want that program right now.
Or abandoned practicing, right?
Well, this is an ambitious project.
Raise that, come on, you give it the word.
You got a hundred, you got twenty thousand bucks for that roof. You can pass that. Parking lot too.
The parking lot is always scary.
Reason, you get some. All right, well, any other questions?
I'm also looking into grant opportunities as well. I know there's community development block grant funding out there still. Um, and we wouldn't be eligible again because it's past five years that we first had CDVG money. Um, so that's an option. I don't know what that would look like. Um, I don't know, Bob, if you have any experience with the CDVG
Yeah.
applications and everything, so we can certainly look for that as well. Um. Perhaps we'd get another earmark. The legislature, but there's ways, we'll also do a capital campaign to raise funds, so.
All right.
Numbers are not set in stone.
Certainly not.
Let me move first to our meeting.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thanks.
I have it on my computer, so if you want this one.
Devin.
Craig, could you give me that a second?
Yes.
Well, you want one? Tree warding.
Probably you had some samples.
Don't you still want it?
Twenty-five words or less, now where are we? Where are we? Partly done, we uh we've gotten down. Started off with about two hundred and it's close to two hundred trees to the list. Uh, since July first, because part of that, I separated it out from July first, because that's an install yard. So since July first, we've taken down sixty trees. Roughly ten of them were done by the Highway Department, forty-five with the tree service by by National Grid. We still got a hundred and twenty-two left to do. Um, about a hundred and ten will require a tree service, two of National Grid and a handful for the Highway Department to do. So that's what we've got in terms of numbers for trees that we still have to deal with. The budget. I started with forty-nine eight fifty. Uh, we've spent eighteen, seven, forty-eight, sixty-three today. Got thirty-one thousand left. So we probably have an average of about nine days left of tree work that we can afford with the annual appropriation. So that brings me to the point of our hundred thousand dollars that we, you know, I read in the paper, gigantic check handed to the town Hampden, but as guess as it turns out, we never got our money for that. So I'd like to know where that stands. Better don't do it and cheat you out of it. It has not arrived yet. And I know, that's what I heard. I'm glad, I mean, I wish I would have known about it. Because until I complained that I wasn't getting postings from our town accountant, and he finally sent it, his comment was, you didn't have to worry, because if we did the trees, we didn't have the money to pay for it, we just wouldn't have paid for the bill. And I'm like, I'm the guy that's hiring these people, and you're not gonna pay the bill? It seems like there's a a lack of communication that I think needs to be strained now. I did get postings from Cliff Now, so and they balance, but I don't know where that hundred thousand dollars sits, but that's important, because I'm trying to prioritize the most dangerous trees first, and roads like I had in the past that don't have any grass. But we've got a lot of trees out there that were, you know, we're getting some complaints on. Most of them are not valid, they're private trees that fill in our public ways. But some of them are town trees that have taken down the power. And as long as there's a bad way to get into that property or not, then those fall lower on a priority list, but, you know, there's a lot of roads that are long.
Okay, do we have an answer from Ash's office, Tom?
We do not. Um. We know that it was appropriated in the budget. It has not been delivered to the town.
But the budget was signed, so it's an earmark that was granted.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Let's see what we can do. Probably somewhere at A and F or apartment. Yeah, call it a park. See what they can, they can do for it.
Maybe they're chronic, the state is chronically late, and they, when something like this happens, they're chronically late in delivering the funds.
Well, then they ought to be chronically late in publicizing in the paper, and everybody thinks I've got a hundred and fifty thousand to spend.
Now, if you're a hundred, though, do you feel confident about accomplishing what you have left?
Yeah, I would say so. I would say so.
It's just you don't want to write bad checks, I say.
Yeah.
I'd like to have the money in your pocket.
I'm not only going, I want to write bad checks, but I'd like to know where my house, if they're bouncing or not, you know, so maybe that's been straightened out, you know?
How was it with the the companies? Are they flat out, are you able to get scheduling?
They're they're all the three companies that your board decided that I should use. I've called all three, I've told them to come in, fire it well, because we got plenty of trees and, right, I thought we had plenty of money. But uh, they're giving them to me as quickly as they can. Most productive tree company is Linden Tree. They've done all but three days worth of work, and and they do a good job. But they're expensive. Treework is expensive, as everybody knows. The problem is, is that it was decided not to bid this work locally, but to go off the state bid. And you all know, because I sent an email telling you what the consequences of that were, but you're gonna be paying fifty-two percent more on labor. And so the bills are coming in higher than they were in the past, but utilizing the state bid, you know, no, you know, nothing to say about it. But uh Linden is sending two two more floors in tomorrow, and so it won't take long before I'm gonna be out of money.
Without the, without serving the guy.
Without debt, yeah. Well, and then until until it is put into the coffers, and I know it's available to be spent, I'm not gonna spend it, I'm not gonna ask somebody to come in and do tree work, and I can't pay it right now. You know?
What about that work at the miniature?
It's got nothing to do with me. That's Hampden Land Trust, and they were told before we went to town meeting, that that's doesn't fall in the preview of the tree ward.
I thought there were a couple trees at the entrance we were doing as part of that, not the stuff internally.
It's all behind the wall, it's all private, it's all back in the impoundland trust.
And the park trees.
Out of my career too. Parks also went out to bid on that last year, and they accepted bids.
Okay.
Um. I mean, the money, the twenty thousand that was put into the tree ward's account, it sits there for that.
Right.
So the funding is there.
Funding is there, you're not overseeing it, but the funding is in your account to pay for that.
It's in the account, yeah. I mean, I I felt as though it was a more appropriate account to put the money into, but with Doug walking with this guy right here told me, don't worry about it, they're gonna transfer it out of your account after town meeting, and put it in the appropriate account, maybe parks and recs expenses or whatever. That hasn't happened, but it doesn't matter, that money can sit there, you know, I'm not worried about it.
The land trust money in the account too, or?
Yeah, parks, yeah, so the fifteen from land trust and the twenty from parks. Yeah, twelve fifteen for the parks, five for land trust. I thought it was.
It was fifteen for parks.
Yeah.
It's a pretty hefty amount.
It was a pretty hefty amount, and the one contractor that told me he bid on it was considerably less than that too. Uh, but I don't know, you'd have to have the Parks Commissioners comment on that.
So I thought it was ten for Mount Vision, which is um land trust and a five for South Road. Fifteen. For the land trust.
There was some money from Mount Vision, sorry, the entrance on North Road, you mean?
Yeah, ten thousand for Mount Vision and five thousand for uh South Road, I thought. So I thought it was fifty, fifteen in total.
And then Parks was like twelve or thirteen.
It was five for South Road, Miami Stadium was was five for the entrance, the parking area on South Road.
Yeah, that was a five, yeah.
And then fifteen for the parks.
Clean-up work on North Road too, or something.
That's the Mount Vision entrance.
Yeah, I heard nothing about that.
So there should be fifteen for trust and then whatever you said for parks.
There was more of a grading, is that actually tree removal at North Road?
I think so. I think Doug's got the answer to that.
My Mount Vision mine was to put in a cover so they could create a little parking area, trailhead for Mount Vision.
Yeah, that was a.
That was a very CDA project.
Yeah.
That's highway. All right, well. So that's kind of where that stands, um, I don't know if there's, I don't think there was, I didn't really have anything else. God, our job is to track down the hundred Gs.
Right.
I don't know, would that be put directly into the tree ward's expense account, Doug, or the hundred thousand, that you could get it from the state?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't been part of that discussion. I assume because of the actual town, we're close to the swipe board, they would then.
Basically, Doug, the income, I was from special, special accountant, and then they all bills against them. That's just an earmark.
Either way, as long as he puts it in a special account, as long as I know.
Here's your account, right, exactly.
We're working tracking it though.
Okay.
I guess that's it for me. That's it, you're out of here. All right, uh, shared health agent, hiring update. We had another session today with the shared group. As you know, the uh intermunicipal agreement is completed. Uh, they're all in agreement to, we got some dates today as to when, two of the towns are going to have this before their boards of selectmen. The next step is to come up with uh a management program. Uh, that'll be another document that we'll have to agree to. But the good news is that uh they have hired a health agent who will be available soon. Uh, and they have also hired a public health nurse. Uh, so we have the staff. The question, I think, for Hampden is whether or not uh we will use the public health nurse or whether we will continue with the public health nurse that we have. The problem with our public health nurse is that she has very limited time available, she has a full-time job. And she's averaging around five hours a week. Uh, sometimes up to ten, we were very busy. Uh, and we will, as of the thirty-first of December, we'll have to have general fund money to can, to, for her to continue. The other option would be simply to utilize the the new shared public health nurse uh and to have our person uh supplement. Uh, I talked to the Long Meadow Town Manager today about that. She wanted the the name and address of our public health nurse, and I think they will use her uh when necessary to supplement the services that are provided by the main nurse. Uh, and and if we do it this way, if we sign on uh with the shared nurse, um, it'll be funded for three years. The town will not incur any for, any cost for this service for the three years of the agreement that we have.
So some of it will continue exploring with Bob and. Something I'll continue to explore with Bob, and the Board of Health will come back to board with our recommendation.
Okay. Uh, special town meeting articles, we have the Kubota excavator. Uh, you should, I gave you copies earlier of uh warrant, yeah. Just as you get into that, I did split, John had suggested that we split the highway articles. I had them combined at first. Now they are eleven and twelve, article eleven as well. One for the truck, one for the excavator. I also received the information from the co-chair of Doug, who's here, the co-chair of the Community Preservation Committee, and I've added that article as well. That would be ninety-three hundred dollars to hire a consultant to prepare an application to establish a national historic district.
Is that the same language as the?
That's article nine.
Same language as the annual town meeting we had, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, this is the, the same proposal.
Same proposal.
I don't know. Kind of. Copies of these, you do, you spread these around, I don't know if she.
Yeah. This is.
Um, I'm concerned, I mean, the advisory has their hearing next Monday, and we still have a couple things waiting for texting here. You think we'll have the crosswalk text by the time of the hearing?
Yes, in fact, they approved our grant uh on Friday. I got a communication today that they're gonna send the contract soon. And I should have, I should have a a number for you, certainly by the time of the advisory committee, as they're hearing. That's really, we have to raise appropriate, is that? Well, um, I'm kind of hoping that the grant will cover everything.
Yeah, but does it, wasn't there a question before, the grant is given to the town, and basically we have to
Reverses.
Basically, yes.
Could be. I don't know, when I get the contract, that'll tell us how how, the technique.
Right.
I also, since we're on this, I've added the two articles, articles five and six for the uh landfill ground mounted solar project.
Yeah. Just a point of order, typical fifteen and sixteen should be reversed. There's no actions taken. Typically, the tax, if you don't take any action on the tax rate, you'd throw the rest of the money into stabilization at the end. I will share that, uh, there was, I did share the spreadsheet with the assessors, and with new growth, you may have gotten an email from the assessor's office that. And with new growth, you may have gotten an email from the assessor's office that preliminary tax rate would be on the low nineteen's actually. Because of like expansion and values. But right now, without any action, the tax rate is projected in just under nineteen thirty-five, just under.
Down from nineteen sixty-seven.
Right, without action at that point.
And and.
But again, we say that does not mean the tax bills go down, at least the tax.
Healthy new growth, but also healthy values.
Values, well, that was utility value, that actually drove it up to value of the town. You'll see it in the utility bill next week.
So let's talk about the, let's talk about, we had this great discussion the last time about how the special town meeting is only for cleaning up stuff. Right, you know, cleaning up stuff. So is the community preservation article on the Kubota tractor excavator cleaning up stuff?
I think it's a good opportunity for the town to save money, we talked, Mark talked about the savings that are. And I think a pretty good analysis of this unit will pay for itself over the next four to five years at the most.
Wasn't the question, the question was, we had a big discussion about how all these things should go before the larger group of people. And there are only fifty people at the special town meeting and we shouldn't vote on these things. Because they're only for cleaning up things in the town meeting and I'm asking you if the Kubota tractor is cleaning up things in the town meeting? Is the preservation thing cleaning up things in the town meeting or not? We should go forward with this.
Well, I think we said at the annual town meeting, if I recall, that we would, we weren't in favor of the C P R or I said that. Because I felt there hadn't been enough public interest or public awareness of it. And I personally would support bringing it back again after that happened. And then Craig will speak the fact, he did a pretty good job of. If you will, satisfying that omission if you will.
I think what Don's getting at though is. There there are different changes that have some effect, although Don's proposal was for a bylaw change. So I could see the justification for a bylaw change, but. And in the past, I was looking at past S T Ms and there were bylaw amendments in the past as well. Over the course of the previous ten years, everything that's online, if you look at the S T Ms, you you could see that there were.
But there was a short period of time where people don't look at it.
Yeah.
So, so I guess the other thing with the Kubota track, well. We have a, we have a financial. In May two thousand nineteen, we had the, uh, Lynn Town Administrator. Propose gave to the selectmen a, uh. Uh, a. Financial management plan for the town, which at that point, uh, they said that all the town, the advisory committee, the treasurer, the accountant. All the financial people agreed to follow these, these issues, uh, find this financial plan. Then the financial plan is a, oh. Capital improvement planning section, which says that each year, each town department should give to the capital improvement planning committee. Their recommended, what they think is their next five-year projection of equipment or needs that they have for their building. And that the capital planning committee would present that, look at it, present it to the selectmen by, I think, January. And the selectmen would decide it would be on the town meeting more than that. So on the Kubota track, the excavator, which I have. No dog in the hunt, there are no personal feelings about it one way or another, because I don't even know what it is, but, uh. It never went to the capital planning committee and, uh. So I just think it should before I bring it to the town and the special town meeting.
Yeah. And that. Lisa's here as well, she'll speak the fact, it did go capital planning last week. Uh, obviously capital planning was concerned about the short notice and that it wasn't, as you said. Fully, I don't want to say vetted, might not be the word, but you know, there was a short review period. I don't think the committee had any issue with the justification for it.
That's right.
The numbers, at least had a chance to meet with Mark or virtually or whichever, and he shared the rationale money-wise. Clearly, it's a good investment for the town. The question you have, is this an appropriate period? How do we? Make this jive with our our plan going forward of having the right timing on purchases? Well.
Well, I think that the, you know, the public needs to know about this purchase too. It's a, it's a new piece of equipment, it's not a replacement and, um. I think in discussions, uh, about the purpose of special town meetings, you know, and again. What Don was saying about cleaning up stuff is a brand-new piece of equipment. And, um, we only had a very spur-of-the-moment discussion, awareness and discussion about the excavator. Um, to where I think I talked to Mark a day or something before you sent an email the morning of our capital planning meeting. And we had not met since August third, so things were moving very, very quickly. And, um, it it seems reasonable to me to, you know, to push off. The, uh, this article until the regular annual town meeting in May.
Sure, I mean, if the board decides to push it off and add the tax rate instead, that's, that's the role of the board.
Would it be in the tax rate, either way?
No, it's being paid for by free cash. Same thing as the parks truck, well, it would have been the parks truck, and now they won't get that truck either.
Why would they not get that?
Well, they get the truck.
Why isn't it the same thing with the highway truck here? Your point about not doing things like this in the fall, and that's a purchase as well.
Well, I think the highway truck, we did, we agreed that we would defer it to the fall. The truck come for the spring?
No, it came up after parks wanted to.
That, I don't think it formally, however, that truck has been. Uh, part of a plan, you know, a replacement plan was due a few years ago. Um, I think that truck has been actually pushed off for the last couple of years.
And why? Because parks would have.
I thought the discussion was back in in the spring that the truck would be put off until the fall because we weren't sure. With the COVID situation or even how everything was gonna, was gonna break out, so we put out some of those things into the fall, like the truck.
I do remember, I do remember something like that.
You know, and 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 my, and the issue as far as being on the tax rate for the, for the excavator. Is, you know, we're going into next year with probably two hundred thousand less in the police budget. A hundred and ninety thousand dollars less for a green metal school bond and some other things that, you know, would offset, just like it's offsetting the issue with free cash. So I would, I would defer to my fellow select persons to make a motion one way or another, spoken, move on to the next thing. And it's like the historic commission article, there was a discussion at the town meeting that we would talk about it in the, at the fall, for the fall meeting.
Good points.
So I just, I mean, I. I don't have a big investment in this, so make a decision, Joe, for me.
I'm happy with the video on warrant, if you want to make a town meeting, I prefer to make a motion for no action, fine, right now it's on the warrant. So I don't see a motion, you're asking for a motion to remove it from the warrant, which doesn't require a motion. We can take action without motion, because we have a clause.
Well, I I'm saying remove it from the warrant for now, that's what, that'd be my, that would my opinion. I'm just trying to get a consensus, it's what it is.
Can we have input from our capital planning chair as a recommendation?
They're deep in the position, which is to push it off until the spring. Uh, we have really not exercised.
That was not the motion.
We. I don't know, John, I think that maybe this is a little bit of shifting around of wording, but that we did approve the. Concept or the idea of purchasing, we saw the validity of of the Kubota excavator that it. You know, made logical sense to purchase with. I think what we didn't discuss, due to perhaps the haste of this being presented that evening, is the process. And the process is that this is a capital expense of over fifty thousand dollars. And the lifespan of being fifteen to twenty years, and because of that, it does qualify as a capital expense. And combined with the, uh, discussion here about, um. That it's, it's generally appropriate to put a replacement vehicle on the, uh, special town meeting in the fall. That the excavator is a new, uh, piece of equipment and I think that. It would be important to educate the public on what they're buying and not just at special town meeting that night.
Oh, two points there, and I, you know, I go back to I respect the department's ability, highway department to come to our board and ask for. Something that improves their department. To what you said, the committee approved the concept or whatever, you know, you're describing of the excavator. It's up to this board then to schedule a purchase, if you will. You're saying that you feel that a purchase should be in a bigger venue, is what you're saying. I am, I am the annual town meeting.
That's one point, but another point is the process and that, um, this was done hastily.
Mark apologizes for that.
Well, but also, John, you're the, you know, you're the liaison to capital planning and. There was ample time between August third and when we last met to bring this, to bring this to my attention. That there was discussion of this excavator, this is brand-new to me and. That's my concern, that I only learned a bit.
I told.
Quite very quick, but with only a few, you know, like a day or a couple of days.
Well, it was, and it came up at the meeting the week before, it wasn't like we've been talking about this for three months. It's now the middle of September, like you said, we met in August.
We didn't discuss it in August.
I know that, that's insane, this came up at the end of August. We then had a meeting after Labor Day, it's.
Okay, the issue, the issue is, I I I don't think, actually don't think anyone's opposed to the, to the excavator.
It's like a backup, Don, but it's.
I I I think, like I can, I barely can make my lawnmower work, so, so it's that, it's. It's, uh, not not opposed to it, it's it's the process, the process is, it didn't go to capital planning. And the process is, there's a big discussion of, well, what should be on the special town meeting and not be on the special town meeting? And so I think I have this amount, seventy-eight thousand dollars should be on, it should be on the regular town meeting.
Mark, you said you rent one normally, is, when is that typically rental period?
Oh, anytime, anytime during construction season, uh, from April through.
Yeah, so we're wrapping up now anyway, right? So if we, if we were to purchase it.
If, if, excuse me, you know, so if you, if, uh. If the town, annual town meeting voted for it, you could get it when?
Right now, I'm being told eight to twelve weeks leave time, um, the other consideration would be. A problem, a possibility of the increase in price.
Yeah.
So, and then getting back to, um, the only difference, Craig would be, you know, it would be ours, we own it. And if the weather allowed, we could have it out, we could have it out all the year long.
So the construction period you're missing would be April to July first time.
That's all right, right, but, um.
Would you have a place to store it right now?
You, yes, yes.
We have a message from the accountant up in the chat.
Yeah, we could do that too.
Right, it's just, again, same thing, period-wise, wouldn't be able to buy it until July first. Somebody's no pricing rates.
All right, let's make a decision. I say put her up to the annual town meeting.
Based on Lisa's comments, I I think we need a little bit more visibility. In the procedural, because we may have set that precedent last week, so.
Right, so we're gonna remove that from the warrant.
Sounds good.
Right, thank you, uh, next item was closing the stuff, town meeting warrant.
Closing warrant with the fifteen articles that's better left.
Second.
Tell them favorite, right. Radios. Yeah, yeah, I get the one on that.
Going, okay, haven't got a lot of information, uh. Bob, do you know if, if Tony Gentile is on the, is on the call?
I haven't seen him, okay.
He said he was gonna try to make it, uh. So. An email I received from Tony last week said that he'll have, he'll have enough money in the grant that he received, communications grant. To cover the rest, the rest of this fiscal year. Um, and then, of course, he's gonna try to re-up for another grant next year and he's just not sure what's gonna happen next fiscal year. Uh, with that being said, the quote I was given from Goose Town. Comes to, uh, six seventy eighty-two a month. Which. Comes to eight thousand forty-nine dollars a year and it's a two-year contract with. I shouldn't say contract, it's a lease agreement that we can break at any time. So if it's something we're not happy with, we can, uh, as long as we give ample notice, we can cancel that lease agreement.
So your first year is gonna be, the grant will pay for it?
Most, uh, well, if we sign up, we'll be, we'll be about halfway through, so, yeah, yep, um. And then, you know, after that, if it's, if we do go to the two years, it's, uh, sixteen thousand ninety-nine dollars.
For two years, for two years, right. And 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 Tony thinks that there is a possibility that he could get some money in the next grant cycle.
Well, he didn't, I'm, I'm sure he, he will, he didn't indicate one way or another, uh. How that would be used or.
These are what those, those are those push-to-talk ones and you can use them all over town without.
So, yeah, communication there, these are the digital, uh, cellular units and that's what, um. So that's what that cost is per month. Actually, you know, it'll be a little bit less than that because they, they overquote, they gave me too many units here, so, um, it'll be, it'll be a little bit less.
Really, sixteen, I think, right?
Sixteen for the two years.
Those sixteen units, sixteen radios?
Thereabouts, uh. Yeah, yeah, but then they've got something in here for a, a mobile phone application and then a home base, which I don't, I mean, uh. I just need a regular radio, I don't need. The fancy stuff, but the service seems, we've been trying them out, the service seems pretty good. Now, Marcus submitted a quote, I've talked to them briefly and. I'm just not very tech, I'm not very tech savvy when it comes to the radio, so, um, now they sent a quote over. It was fourteen hundred dollars or thereabouts, um, I was trying to print it, but my printer wouldn't work for some reason, but. And that was to put us, from what I understand, a single-band radio over at the Wilberham Police Station with an antenna and everything else. But we're not sure if the connection's gonna make it, which we were actually pretty much banking on it won't. So then they had given me kind of a, a verbal quote of replacing all of our, our units and the trucks and and having some handheld units. And then also approaching, reapproaching, uh. revisiting the use of the tower up on Mountain Road on the Black River. And then that, that verbal quote was roughly twenty-five to thirty thousand. For, that would be dual-band radios.
Why is that, these are radios you have now with just a repeater on?
I guess that's my, I agree, I was just looking for a way to either see if our radios could be reprogrammed or if they have that capability, but.
Is anybody available to move that tower? That's, I mean, that's a nice solution, but that tower is ready to fall.
They're gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars to Marcus, why, yeah, why can't we put it into the tower?
Right.
And then we have a solution in longevity that we know works.
Well, who says P B T A won't also partner up? They use that tower as well, so. Because that does give good coverage, when that tower is on, it really.
Yeah, you're about eight hundred feet above sea level there.
And that would certainly help some of our dead spots around now, because that's the other part of the issue is especially during the snowstorm, cloudy conditions, we would have communication issues across town. I'll tell you, these have very little issues with. But there's a monthly, you know, a monthly fee to it, it's like paying for itself.
The good thing about those is you can use them nationwide, you can use them in Springfield.
Well, that's true.
The Cape.
Anywhere you have.
Florida, California, but there's no need for that. He can listen to his guys and be like, hey, did you hit this?
Well, that's why they have officially one hand and listening with the others. They have a mobile app for the phone, I said, well, how many things do you want me to carry around? One or the other, thanks, but no thanks, but.
Well, we didn't mention the implant, I think that.
So in my opinion, you can repurpose the V H F radios you currently have.
See, I just don't know enough about that stuff and.
I'm a radio, I'm a tech guy and I know about radios.
Well, yeah.
And I have a radio license and stuff like that. So your V H F radios, you can repurpose.
Okay.
Okay, and your trucks already have, so there's no, no expense to there. The expense would be trying to get a higher repeater point, which would be.
But does that give them capability with the dispatch and stuff, they're all linked in or?
Yes, because Mountain Road Tower could probably, we would have to double-check it, but you could.
I mean, frequency wise and whatever, they're all able to switch over.
Right now, dispatch can't communicate to them because your tower, your antenna is on.
No, not from the antenna standpoint, but I mean, if he was sitting next to his radio, would communicate with dispatch.
Right, my point is that the antenna, the higher the antenna, the better reception. Right now, his current antenna for his facility is located at D B W. There's no communications from there to Wilberham.
Right, I'm saying if there was, his weapon can't communicate with their.
So like, you know, what would happen, and from what I understand, talking with the guy from, from Marcus is, it would be just like, we would be able to use that three-point system that they set for the fire department. But then I believe they would still have to put a separate radio into Wilberham P D. I think. It's really offering, you know, trying to, but.
But you don't wanna communicate with your guys.
And we still would be, either way, we'd still be able to.
I understand the Wilberham P D.
Dispatch, regional dispatch is public safety, so they're.
So they could say, okay, there's a tree down.
Yeah, it's just point of communication for, for assistance. So the police department has to relay to D B W.
So really, that's, you know, figure I wanted to work with one of the, one of the two companies. I have no preference, really, I just really want.
How do we work on this tower thing on the black property? Is it something like we reach out P B T A, Tony reaches out to the owner as well, look, there's some grants available that we can make available to you. If you improve this, it's gonna, right, basically the rising tide of flow.
The only, only concern I see is the town doesn't own that tower, it'd be owned by an individual. So then there's the monthly fee into them and what they're charging.
The fire department pays them twelve hundred bucks.
Fire department's off of there.
A year.
Fire department's off of there, aren't they?
Yeah, they're off, but they were paying twelve hundred bucks.
Twelve hundred a year, which is cheap. You rent over up on Ridge Road Tower and you're paying five hundred dollars a month. So I, I think it'd be beneficial to see what, if we could get that grant funding for that Mountain Road Tower. And see what options are out there to utilize that.
Yeah, while you're talking, Ash's office, Bob, I'm missing a check.
Would you follow up with him on it? With Mark?
Yeah, that'd be great, I mean.
That's good to know our current radios work.
Yeah, they work, I mean, you guys use them now.
Yeah, they work.
Just, it's spotty in town.
And that was my question all along, is I, and I guess, I don't know if I'm missing something, but why can't we just do this, but.
Can I stop by tomorrow morning?
Absolutely.
Anything else?
What do you think, we're gonna be able to do that pipe project at the park?
John, I've got the pipe, it's still, it's underwater. So I ordered a perforated pipe for a couple of different projects and I ordered a solid pipe. I've got the perforated pipe. And I'm having some having some issues with the solid pipe right now. I will get it. And I've been checking it too, it's just, as soon as it dries out, even, even like I said, if we have decent weather during winter months or something, we could sneak in there and do that, that's, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right. We go for the, yeah. Can the board either vote to execute the warrant contingent upon the changes that we've identified? And you can then sign it maybe Thursday at the special meeting. Or do the same, I'll put it on the agenda for the special meeting. Because if we wait until the fourth of October, it would be posted on the fifth. Thirteen days, maybe one more day, so it's cutting it. Yeah, so let's.
Yeah.
So Thursday we'll do a, a brief, a brief review meeting, then we'll go to the executive. All right, all right, Mrs. Glover.
I asked to be on the agenda this evening because I wanted, because I understand the board is actively pursuing a settlement in the lawsuit between Hampton and the Regional School District. I want to highlight three key aspects of this complicated problem, which should guide this board's action. The first point, in twenty eighteen, the town meeting took favorable action on warrant Article Eight, which states that, oh, prior to entering any settlement agreements with the Hampton-Wilberham Regional School Committee relative to the school issues, the Hampton Selectmen will hold a duly convened town meeting where a discussion and vote on the matter will be held. Now, I know that John has claimed that the board does not have to go to town meeting to settle the lawsuit. That may be true. Article Eight may very well be advisory, but that is to miss the point significantly. The question is not, do you have to? It is, should you? I submit that the wise thing to do politically and strategically is to bring any agreement you develop before town meeting for their information and comment. After all, the voters rejected the board's first attempt to settle. They approved reinstating the lawsuit as present, presented originally. They allocated additional funding for it. They clearly expressed their desire to be an active participant in the process by a vast majority. In their, in the end, their vote may not be binding, but at least you would show them, you respect them enough to honor their request. The second point, any settlement that includes changes to the regional agreement must be brought to town meetings in both towns for those alterations to be binding. The regional school agreement is a contract between the town of Hampton, the town of Wilberham, and the region. And as such, any changes to it, even deleting an extra comma or adding a period, requires town meeting approval. If you need proof, I point you to the most recent attempts to change it, expanding the region to a K through twelve entity, the proposal to redefine borders to identify the schools to which students are assigned, and the efforts to have students in grade seven through twelve educated at Menucha, which all have been subject of town votes. There have been more than ten times in the past few years that issues about the schools have gone to the town meeting. Indeed, the numerous efforts by the region to alter the regional agreement have always gone to town meeting. This was done because the region knew that there was no other legal way to change the agreement. If there were, you can be sure the region would have done it. Likewise, the board does not have the legal authority to change the regional school agreement as part of any settlement. To be clear, the board can settle, it just can't alter the regional school agreement. For example, it is outside your authority to change the so-called transfer language to adjust school lines and even, or to even capitalize a letter in the document. The third point, as you make this decision, you need to know that what the region promised when it initially sought to transfer our students has not proven to be true. It did not save money as promised, it merely reallocated it. Our students are not getting a better education. Countless examples show that it is far worse. The sheer number of students leaving the district gives evidence of that fact. Hampton children were not welcomed with open arms, they were treated as outsiders, as minorities. I know it's easy to dismiss me, but you need to know that the situation in Hampton students, our children, and their parents is far worse than it was before. In that light, I urge you to continue to fight for the best interest of our children and not simply give up. At the very least, should you decide to settle, I ask you to commit tonight to honors the voter's wishes and bring any proposed settlement before them at town meeting first. And I remind you that any change to the regional school agreement requires town meeting approval. And those are my comments for the meeting. And I think, I've asked you for a commitment and I hope that as you leave the meeting tonight, you will think about that and see if that isn't the kind of a commitment that you can be proud to make. On another matter, I have been going to town meetings for fifty years. Which is a long time and a lot of town meetings. And as I recall, special town meeting was, as you said, done for, as John has mentioned in the past, for bookkeeping. Indeed, originally, I didn't think we had, we had a town meeting in the fall. I thought the town meetings were just in the spring, from my memory, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we should, I would ask the board to look into whether we do indeed need two town meetings a year. Many towns have one town meeting a year, not two. And I think two just confuses people, doesn't get the turnout at the bottom that we would like, and, and almost discourages participation in the market. Thank you.
I'm gonna go back to, I think, and read over, probably speak back to, town meetings in the fall have been decades. Again, it's because of closing books and being able to set a tax rate, is the biggest thing, right?
Fifty years, when I go back to the eighties.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that was, that was the main purpose. Some towns, and Don may know this, I think, some towns keep a free cash account where they can spend from. And we've never done that because it doesn't provide the transparency, if you will, that the board can just, oh, we're gonna spend this from free cash. We like the opportunity to bring down the tax rate and bring up the savings account. And I think that's been a consistency, and Bob may speak to that in other towns as well, it's just a matter of closing the books prior to setting the tax rate.
As far as special town meetings go, and just looking on our website, we've had a S T M since two thousand and two. Sometimes multiple a year, you know, two thousand and two, there was three.
I, I think that's too many, but.
Well, that was.
That's been here.
It was probably
Right, improving use, thank you, Mary, I'll prove use of town websites.
Yeah, so basically we've been trying to look through minutes or agendas and everything. I don't feel like everybody, every department is utilizing our website to its fullest. I'd like to see if we can maybe create some policy, a procedure of some sort where we can get all the departments on board with posting minutes in a timely fashion and make sure agendas are posted, you know, all the time. There's plenty of boards that don't post on the website and don't rely on the board.
I'd like to see it, I think, right, I'd see this, I'd like to see that to be a major topic that the department established. I think sometimes the stabbing focuses too much on outside things when really we wanna target in on what's happening inside here, right? You may have seen the same thing, I think that's and the different boards that we liaise to as well. And Don, you've got a couple, Frank, you've got a couple, that's important stuff, what do they need, what can we do to help them with this thing?
I know like minutes, they just need to be available if somebody requests within ten or eleven days. But, you know, you have departments that haven't posted minutes ever, and it would just, it'd be nice to be able to go back and read that.
I would add to that, that the departments should not only have their postings and minutes posted timely, but also certainly the major boards should use Zoom to allow residents to tune in when they can't, they come down here and sit here.
Right, we'll bring you, dig it up at the next, yeah.
Well, regarding minutes, I have done that already, but I mean, yeah, this is the process that's gonna require some.
You know, it's gonna, it's gonna be some, be something that you're gonna have to stay on them all the time.
And give them the opportunity, your state procedure, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think what Craig was doing on the town website, a bit of a cleanup, I think maybe you keep the news section, the more news and less of the, here, watch this video. Now we have a tab, boom, go to the YouTube channel here. And keep the news, the news, tree lighting, stuff like that.
Yeah, important stuff, select the reports.
A couple of board meetings, we have C O A, every other, as you know, the big topic, last time was bringing this forward, the select board that the expansion should be kicked off the back, at least the middle, if not the front burner. The water project is moving ahead, I believe. Bobby took care of the central register, or that's off the central.
It goes to the central and what I saw today, they're gonna ask me to put it on combines.
Okay, fine, they got the specs done together for that.
Yeah, it appears on, on the central on Wednesday.
Parks and Recs meeting's coming up Thursday at six.
Appreciate them pushing it also, in fact, thank you. You know, because obviously Tuesday, Wednesday are pretty tight up.
Pretty busy days.
Yep, pretty busy days, and then we're meeting on Thursday now as well, is that here now?
It was Thursday, we're meeting Thursday six o'clock here, two executive sessions. School litigation and police union negotiation.
Ballparking, three hours, or?
Yeah.
What?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll bring dinner.
Oh, can I, this, this, we have to vote on this, this is the tri-town trolley thing again?
Probably, you probably should vote it, it's an extension. Mom just got it today, right?
It just arrived, but it's copy that I have is signed by town manager, me, Slommetto, but.
Well, last year I signed it after a lengthy back and forth about spellings and stuff like that.
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the extension to the tri-town trolley agreement.
Same.
Tell them, favor. All right, and then, what about this owner's instructions to engineer concerning bond and insurance?
That was a form, I just wanted you to be aware of it, a form that had been requested of us and so Bob and I.
Oh, that's the, the guy who won't build the garage?
At the Maroif thing?
Yes, it's the Maroif.
The guy who won the bid and now refuses to build the garage? Town administrative report.
Yes, we've been over much of this, capital planning, met on the twenty-first. We pretty much completed the twenty-year vehicle replacement schedule. And as was pointed out earlier, the rubber track excavator is not on that list, although the truck is. We now have two vacancies on the capital planning committee. I'm gonna post, gonna post those vacancies and see if we can recruit more people. Uh, I'm gonna post, I'm gonna post those vacancies and see if we can recruit more people. Whip City Fibers in town, they've completed their work, we are waiting for our representative for Montre, who is coming to, uh, basically, uh, sign off. They will, they will cut over, uh, and our service will come from Whip City Fiber. Yeah, you, Andre has in fact submitted a plan for technology for the coming year.
They did?
I just saw today, yes.
Okay, well, on the bill that we had tonight, they, it seemed like the number of Office Three through sixty-five accounts has gone up again. And I, I'd like to list them, what those email addresses are, that bill's getting higher.
We just added, uh, Suzie.
That was thirty-five accounts, plus the, plus the ultimate accounts.
Uh, we did add one last week, uh, the assistant, uh, counter, Suzie.
Also, Bob mentioned that, uh, vendor for the phone system contacted me, and I had a meeting with Bob today to see if we're interested in doing an upgrade for the town home. And in light of that, we actually did find out that if we go to V O I P, we actually probably saved money in the town phone account. Uh, right now, we had dropped our monthly charge from eight hundred down to three-something for some effort by Jane. However, if we go to V O I P, it was down into the two-something on a monthly basis, and we'd get.
Put twenty-eight hundred dollars upfront, and then it goes to two-sixty-two a month, you know, and then we own, we own the system for years.
Is there any options you V O I P with Whip City at, at discount?
Uh, this is just, it's basically a hardware purchase, it had nothing to do with the service.
And everyone's on board with.
We were talking about final, much better.
That's the next hurdle, um, I did, I got that, uh, I got that quote late this afternoon, and I believe I sent it out to everybody. So, if I didn't, I thought I did, if I didn't, uh, I'll send it tomorrow morning. And so, let's see, police union, uh, negotiations. I, I haven't put an article on the warrant to cover any additional costs from the contract because in that article number one, whatever costs we have, once we get a, a grip on that in a new contract, we can simply change numbers at the town meeting, uh, to accommodate. So I didn't put an article on. I mentioned the public health nurse, the grant funding to that project, and I've also asked Becky Moriarty to convene the Hampton Disabilities Commission to discuss grant funding for updating the accessibility plan, and then later, an application. And we would become eligible for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to install an elevator here. The, this has been delayed a bit because I had asked, uh, E L Architecture of East Long Meadow, uh, who, the, the organization that did the accessibility plan, uh, back three, four years ago, I've asked them to give us a quote for updating that plan, because when you apply to the Office of Disabilities, they actually ask you to list a vendor that you're going to use, um, to, to, to do this, to do the study or the plan, which is an unusual procedure, but. I've had the delay because I'd, I'd asked them maybe a month ago to come up with a quote, it just came in within the last three, four days. So now I think we're ready to submit the application, get the planning grant, get the update done relatively soon and be in good stead to apply for a, a real grant, uh, early next year, or whenever the round begins next year uh, to fund, uh, I think, the most important need for accessibility in this building, that is a, an elevator that'll accommodate the people in the wheelchair.
I'd like to add something to that, um, I did, uh, speak with people in the library about the incidents, the lift not working. It was, it was just the weight issue.
Okay, so we don't need to.
I don't think so.
Uh, all right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, lease contract, and it would public session would be detrimental to our negotiation, and not to return to open session.
So move.